Meeting on the planning commission dated Wednesday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four at six forty one officially in the session. Roll call.
Commissioner Kodyan.
Present.
Commissioner Winkler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tarazza Baxter, your vice chairperson Rivera.
Here.
And Commissioner Abadi, if that's not for the record.
Is, uh, do we have any adjustments to the agenda for this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the, uh. Out there, I'm out there. Let's, um, let's go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance and the pledge of allegiance up there. Ready, begin.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, one free, just strong.
All right, since I got ahead of myself, normally we do the, uh, the adjustments to the agenda, but since we have no adjustments at this evening, we'll move forward to the, uh, be public appearances. Do we have any, uh, scheduled public appearances? Okay, just, uh, to outline, uh, the public appearance matters not appearing at the agenda, if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commissioner's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that, uh, longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Uh, looking down at the, um, at the, uh, room, I have, uh, anybody? Okay, I have nobody, and again, we've, uh, outlined that there's, uh, nobody, uh, scheduled. We will move on to, um, see new businesses, uh, discussion, action or recommended or denied. Uh, C one administration of the oath of office, newly appointed planning commissioner Francisco Curriel is, uh, my, uh, honor to, uh, to welcome you aboard since we've already taken care of the formalities of that. Can we take a second for him to, to tell us a little bit about, uh, about himself?
Yeah.
Please. Oh, now you guys are putting me in the spot. I, I, I gave you, I gave you the, the pass on the pledge of allegiance. Go ahead and, uh, and take it from here.
Well, my name is Francisco Curriel and, uh, been a valley wide resident, um, born in Broly, raised in El Central. Part of the first graduating class of Southwest. Unfortunately, I'm not an Imperial Tiger, but my family is, uh, my family is from Imperial. A lot of them are from, uh, graduated from Imperial, my kids, uh, ten Imperial, uh, Imperial School District. I'm also, uh, currently, I studied architecture, been, been doing construction between, between architecture and, and construction for the roughly the last, oh geez, it's been a while, twenty five to thirty years, if that. I seem, uh, younger than that, but I feel a little younger than that. And I cur- I'm currently working for a general contractor, uh, Nielsen Construction, which is out of San Diego, California.
All right, well, welcome aboard. Glad to have your experience, uh, on the, on the, uh, on the committee. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything for him? No pressing, nothing pressing for him, no pressing, pressing questions for him? Dang it. Um, C two, uh, appointing the planning commission chairperson.
I'll just do a brief intro. The way that our ordinances are set up is that, um, every July, we do a reorganization. So we did that in July, but since our chairperson is now vacant, you just have that item on. In the event you do switch the vice chair, um, around up to that chairperson, you could also, uh, handle that at this meeting as well tied to the same item or wait till the next meeting. But go ahead and talk about it and decide who you guys decide to fill in for chairperson.
All motion to appoint, um, chair, uh, commissioner, uh, Rivera as the commission's chairperson.
I'll second that motion.
You put that to a, to a vote officially?
We should, we should, yeah. Unless you reject it.
Unless you reject it.
Fight going out the door, we can still do it.
I, I have, I have, uh, in all honesty, I've spent the last two years finding a way to, to work my way around it and you guys went straight on the attack. Let's, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, make that official.
Just tap it, nope, I only have Lisa's on there, there we go. Tap them again. I'm missing Rivera's.
Tap? Okay, perfect. Vote.
That's the stay on.
Yeah, tap it again, it's not on for Tarazza Baxter.
Oh, motion carries four zero. And then now my recommendation would be under this item and we can verify it on the, the next agenda, but would be if you're comfortable picking a vice chair at this time, it would be appropriate or we can put it on the next agenda.
Do we have any objections to go ahead and just closing that out and, uh, and putting that to a vote at this time? Do I, do I have any, uh? Um, so any, uh, any nominations for, uh, the vice chair at this time?
I nominate Lisa.
Okay, I will, uh, I will, uh, second that.
And I will accept the nomination.
Okay, go ahead. Motion carries with one abstained from Commissioner Winkler.
All right, with, uh, those, uh, those matters that taken, uh, taken care of, we'll move ahead to, uh, item D consent calendar, uh, D one approval of planning commission meeting, uh, meeting minutes for November eighth, twenty twenty three. Do we do those individually?
We can do them all together unless anyone, um, states that they'd like to separate them. And then just a little bit of advice, since you weren't here for the meetings, it'd be okay to abstain on, on this one, but, um, that's what I would recommend. So you can just do one to approve the entire consent calendar unless somebody wants to pull it.
Everybody on board with the, uh, total vote or anybody have anything in a particular one of these, uh, that they wanna, um, do separately? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the total consent calendar.
Okay, that being said, um, do I have a second? Uh, just for the record, I'm gonna go ahead and read the, uh, the other three. D two approval for planning commission meeting minutes on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Uh, D three approv- uh, approved planning commission meeting minutes for June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And D four approved planning commission meetings for July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Let's go and take that to a vote.
Motion carries three zero with one abstained from Commissioner Kodyan.
Item E, public hearing discussion, action recommend, uh, recommend or deny. Uh, E one subject, uh, public hearing discussion, action, uh, conditional use permit for twenty four zero seven for eight express to allow the off sale of, uh, beer and wine under, uh, a type twenty A B C license at three ninety West Aitken Road. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA under, uh, section fifteen oh six one. Uh, B three common sense and section fifteen three oh one existing facilities. Um, public hearing? This, uh, go ahead and open for the, uh, public hearing at this time? Do we have anything?
Yes. Good evening commissioners and welcome Commissioner Curriel. Um, this project is, um, for C U P twenty four zero seven is to allow Aitken Express, uh, to acquire a type twenty A B C license that will allow them to sell alcoholic beverages for off premise consumption. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA as mentioned, um, under fifteen zero six one common sense exemption and fifteen three zero one existing facilities. Um, this public hearing was duly noticed in the Holtville Tribune on August fifteenth and notices were also mailed out to all property owners within three hundred. There were no objections received by our office or the city clerk's office, um, as of end of date today. The development review committee reviewed the proposed project and as noted in the staff report, our police department conditioned, um, um, the property owner to educate staff on responsible alcohol sales. Um, other than that, um, there were no other conditions other than the standard conditions the city sets on all, on all projects. The applicant, uh, sent a representative, um, to speak on his behalf, um, she is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, that's, uh.
Yeah, come on up, it's okay.
I'm sorry buddy, you need to speak to me a little bit louder, 'cause I can barely hear you guys. So, I am Veronica, I'm representing Aitken Express and Mr. Raf Kaka. So, if you had any questions for me?
We're, nothing over there?
Let me ask one. Let me ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, actually not a question for you, more for, for staff. Um, I guess the question was, based on the conditions of approval, I did see that the provisions of this C U P will run with the land and it binds current and future owners, and then I saw in the staff report that the past owner had the ability to sell alcohol, so is, I guess my question would be, why are we coming for this C U P with this new owner if, if my understanding based off of previous agreements is that they can just carry over to the next one?
It's a very good question and good catch, so this was a non-conforming use, so it, our, um, zoning ordinance at this location does require that it go through this process. And so we're doing it correctly at this time.
Oh, okay.
So you are exactly right, um, it, they did sell it before, we didn't have that, um, condition or it wasn't met, we, we didn't go through the process when it was first established, so when, when we talked about it, we said we need to do it, do it correctly, 'cause A B C will check and, and this will be forwarded to them.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think we've brought that up before, once we get a hold, we realize that we, we kind of holding ourselves to accountable to that.
Correct, we're, we're, we're trying very, very hard to be, um, if there are any issues or non-conforming uses within fair, uh, you know, to, to immediately treat, treat it appropriately and to treat everyone the exact same.
Okay, all right then, um.
The public won't notice the difference.
Right.
You guys have been, how long have you guys had your doors open under the new management? How long have you, uh, guys been open under the new manager?
Do you wanna talk to her?
Uh, yeah. I'm sorry, but.
Hmm? In Spanish?
No, 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 I can barely hear you guys.
How long have you been?
Since April. We've been open since April, April first.
Yeah, although that's correct, right, I think it was closed for a short period of time and then had been transferred and then they've been working on their A B C permit, you'll see if you go there that it's posted for the public to know about it, and then this is our zoning approval and you know, some of the things that people consider when they're doing the zoning element of this is, are there way too many alcohol stores in that location or too many, you know, so, uh, when you're thinking about it from a land use perspective, you're thinking about, is this the right place to sell alcohol in our community? And as Rebecca, or sorry, Commissioner mentioned, um, it, it is one of those things that they were doing it at, what was it, maybe six, ten months ago? They were selling, so it should not be a significant change.
Okay, all right, now I was just, I was just kind of covering that, um, uh, it's another one of those instances where it's, we've had it before. Uh, obviously it, it worked out for everybody, uh, everybody involved. I'm, I don't look for, I don't look forward to, I don't see anything, uh, any reason to, uh, to hold this up. Does anybody else have any questions? Miss Curriel, I'm gonna pick on you for the rest of the evening.
No, I'm good.
Is, uh, okay, no, that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to a commission discussion, uh. Oh, my goodness. Closing the, uh, pub, uh, public comment at this, at this point, uh, moving on to a commission, uh, discussion. Um, just one more time for the record, uh, nobody has anything, uh, anything further on this? All right, um, I'm, uh, going to move forward for a, uh, a recommendation in action on this, anybody?
Motion to approve resolution of the planning commission of City of Imperial recommending approval of conditional use permit twenty four dash zero seven to allow the off sale alcoholic beverage sales at Aitken Express located at three ninety East Aitken Road.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Yeah.
All right.
No, but only, not yours isn't on. Okay, motion carries four zero.
Moving on to item F, uh, commission the new business discussion, action, uh, recommend denied, uh, F one city hall parking lot improvements.
Good evening commissioners, uh, David Dale, Public Services Director. So this proposal, um, is not necessarily regarding the parking lot striping changes, but the striping changes along Imperial Avenue in front of City Hall. So we are proposing to remove two spaces. I know that, um, parking is at a premium, especially in front of City Hall and City Ha- um, City Hall parking lot. Uh, but part of the parking lot project will be expanding the spaces by eight. Well, so we'll have eight more spaces in the parking lot and we'll have one more accessible space, so essentially nine more spaces, what we're changing in City Hall. And we're, we're proposing to actually reduce the parking, uh, along Imperial Avenue by two spaces. We did increase the parking by two spaces when I believe this commission approved the removal of the crosswalk and s- subsequently the city council approved the removal of the crosswalk, so essentially it will be a wash with regard to the number of spaces. In the city hall parking lot project, we are now proposing that none of those spaces will be marked, uh, or reserved in any kind of way. Right now we have three or four spaces that are fifteen minute parking only inside of City Hall parking lot, which they're not really enforced, so, I mean, really, we're not enforcing the fifteen minute parking. So when people come up to pay their water bill or have some sort of business with City Hall or community development, they're having, sometimes have a hard time to find parking, so we are proposing to, to make three spaces in front of City Hall along Imperial Avenue fifteen minute parking spaces only, and then those would be enforced, uh, through ticketing measures. So, and then we're also proposing to, as going back to the two spaces we're proposing to remove, the reason why we're pro- proposing to remove them as parking is at a premium is that exiting the parking lot, it is very difficult to see oncoming northbound traffic on Imperial Avenue. And so we already had at least one, um, collision there, uh, for that reason, and so what we did was when the gas company slurry sealed Imperial Avenue and they restriped it, we asked them not to stripe those last two pending this, uh, commission's approval and subsequently, of course, the city, um, city council, so that when employees are leaving them, they, we can, other than public is leaving our parking lot, they can When employees are leaving, the they we can, other than public is leaving our parking lot, they can see what it will feel like without those two spaces. And so far, I got positive feedback that it's much better to for vision uh leaving the parking lot. So what we're doing, we're proposing to, instead of making those parking spaces, proposing to make a pickup and drop off only where. U P S can stop there and drop off, uh, or our people can stop there and drop off their. Their water bill in the drop box there, cause there's a drop box right there, so. Essentially, that is the proposal that we're putting in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Uh, for the fifteen minute parking spots that are gonna, huh, I guess not removed, but be moved right from the parking lot to the street. How many were in the parking lot, is it three also? Okay, so it's the same amount that you're moving, okay.
So for the one, it's gonna be a parallel parking where the two spots are?
It could be parallel or or straight in, because U P S, I mean, probably, and and I, we checked it, you can actually. Come in and park parallel as you're coming northbound on Imperial, so there's enough, it's like twenty eight feet, so there's enough room to come in from northbound. And park parallel to drop off, or there's enough room to park um straight in, it it, we don't have a, we don't have it designated yet. That way.
And then someone will monitor that it's just a pickup and drop off?
Yeah, this this will be a a police issue.
And that'll just be, so everything is only eight to five, like all the time parking in front will only be eight to five? Cause like if someone across the street's having a party, can they have people park there after five for as long as they want?
Well, that's a good point that I really didn't think about that, but for the fifteen minute parking, but um, because. In the weekends, it's generally a ghost town right there.
Yeah, so it'll just be like, it'll just be marked eight to five or something?
I guess we could do that, if you, that if that's the direction, eh, I mean, I guess on the sign, Monday through Friday, eight to five, fifteen minute parking, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, if if we don't, we will cross that path in in.
We'll have a line of people that got tickets here.
Yeah, we, yeah, if we can make that uh.
A good point.
Make that note, um, so in the end, we ended up, like you noted, is um with the. Removal of the crosswalk, and then with the with the spaces, the counter for inside, we end up breaking even, that's. That's about the same math that I came with, now you did, you did note that you guys have been trying this out?
Yes, it's, we've been using it for the past two weeks like that.
That's, that was the first thing that I was going to and 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 go ahead and just check that off the box now, um.
So it's not marked right now, it's just empties, cause I was waiting for this commission and of course city, city council, so. But if if this commission finds that those parking spaces should be there, we can always stripe them.
Yeah, I'm sure the parcel services will 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 commend us for for helping them out in that regard, so. Anything else? You move forward and uh get a recommendation on that?
But I don't see what the the title of it is.
The city hall parking lot improvements, or is just.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the city hall parking lot improvements with um. The adjustments of putting the parking, the time parking to only be Monday through Friday, eight to five, uh, no holidays.
I second that.
Motion carries four zero.
Uh, F two split the phase highway eighty six and uh Fifteenth Street.
Yes, uh, so this item, we've received requests to um change the signal. At Fifteenth and Imperial Avenue from what permissive type of phasing to a split phase. Permissive is, I'm sure you've seen it, when you have just a green globe and the left turns have to yield to oncoming traffic. And what we're proposing is to create a split phase, which means that you have a left green arrow. Um, so it's a dedicated left turn, so what we're seeing is the improvement of safety for pedestrians crossing. On the, we're proposing to change it only to the north side of Fifteenth and. Because right now there's pedestrian crosses on the south side and the north side, uh, but the south side is not marked, so there's no crosswalk. And there is no sidewalk on the south side of Fifteenth on the uh east side of Highway eighty six, so. We want to dedicate this crossing from to one side of the street, which would be the north side in this case, which is the side of. Uh, where all the commercial activity and the school is at, and so we would, in this proposal, remove the pedestrian crossing on the south side. And and change the signal from a, from three bulbs to four, when the fourth one would be the left turn arrow only, um. In where our view is that left turn, uh, dedicated left turns are safer. And and so um, we have that, and I want to also bring out a couple more things that. We're not in the staff report necessarily, but um, one of the things that we see is that. In the last two and a half years, the city's now implemented a camera system, so the camera system identifies vehicles and it adjusts accordingly. So that would also help in this regard, and that only came into place in the last two and a half years, so before that signal was i- installed in the way it is right now. And so the city can modify the timing on that uh from from the the shop. Uh, also, the east and westbound lanes in this particular intersection have dedicated left hand uh lanes. So there's, it's not just one lane and and you're waiting, so there are dedicated left hand lanes already um provided. And as I mentioned, the split phase we think is uh safer, it also mentions in a traffic study that was done for. Um, Barioni and Fifteenth that um if the signal is changed into a permissive. Which right now, by the way, all the signals are now split phases, except for this one, they're on the whole city are all split, except for this one particular one. The traffic study identifies, if it's, if it goes to permissive, it could lead to more traffic collisions. So the going the other way is the safer way, going from permissive to split, in my opinion. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I I do believe that going from a permissive to split is safer. Um, we also, like I said, we're moving the south pedestrian crossing, which would be safer for pedestrians and also expedite the traffic. A lot of tra- when traffic studies are created, they're created to say like, how can we expedite traffic safely through in- intersections? Uh, removing that, would um pedestrian crossing, we think would um expedite traffic and make it more safe. I'm the only, like, if there is a drawback, uh, the drawback would be that the traff- traffic going straight through. Would have an additional wait period for the left hand turns to make the left hand first, so that would be, I guess, the con out of all this and all the pros. Would the con would be a little bit more waiting for the straight traffic to go through. And essentially, that is my presentation, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just had one question, do a lot of kids use that South Band cross um crosswalk now?
I'm would defer and maybe.
So then what?
But the, but on the north side.
But only on the north side of the street or do they cross on the south?
The crossing guards cross on the north side, they don't cross on the south side.
So nobody really uses that south, very few uses that cross out.
I don't think there's any sidewalks on the south side.
They don't really use it.
On the north side?
Yeah, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna err in the, on the, on the thought process of of. Of a young adolescent coming out of school and the draw there is gonna be that A M P M. To swing by after school and go buy something sweet, something sugary, uh, and that's most likely. Uh, why they, you know, they would probably use a north end, uh, which kind of leans in our favor in that in in that regard. Um, but again, that's not scientific, that's not traffic study, that's just thinking, um. That that it, that kind of works in our favor, um, Mister Dale, you, did I hear correctly, we we do, um. Have the ability, we, the lights can switch in those lights over or is under city, right, not not state?
This is all city, correct?
Okay, I'm just making sure, I I was hoping I heard that right, cause.
All of now, Highway eighty six and the city limits are, is now city right away, I believe.
Does Ne- Neco also have the? Are they under this right now? Was this our last one that that was left?
This is the only signal that is currently not split phase, yeah.
And you might have had it in there, and I apologize if I didn't see it, how long does it take you to switch it out, is that like a? Quick thing, it's, or is it gonna be a a little mess while school's going on?
No, oh, you mean the construction part?
Yeah.
The construction part shouldn't have a big impact on traffic, is, I thought you were talking about the time from where it's approved. Because we have engineering to do for, there's an engineer that has to get involved and um and make sure that it's stamped by a traffic engineer. And um, the construction, but, no, it it shouldn't, it shouldn't have a big effect on on traffic. It is basically essentially the changing the the three lights to the four light type signal, so. And all the other work is done in the cabinet and programming, yeah.
Is there any additional striping that's required uh for that turn that's right there on Fifteenth on the east? I'm sorry, on the west side um of eighty six, is there? For that left turn now, that will be there in terms of it being signaled, is there any additional striping that's required or anything like that?
When I looked at it, it has, already has a dedicated left hand turn, and then it, the, there's two lanes, there's one dedicated left hand turn and there's one that goes straight or right hand turn. Two lanes, so I don't think there's any striping changes.
Mister Chair, I have a question, um, is is the Aitken and eighty six. I I thought I I understood you to say that every other signal is split phase, now at Aitken and eighty six, for example. If you're, if you're turning left, when the uh both sides can turn left, right? Eh, is that referred to as split phase?
The green, the left green arrows, when 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 you don't have a yield, yes, split phase, correct?
So, the situation at Barioni. Uh, is, if if, let's just take your head at eastbound, if you're going, sh- if you wanna go straight east. Or you wanna turn north, it's green for both of those movements, and then. At some point in time it changes, and then the left turn and the through all then turns green, which is different. Than Aitken, which has left turns at the same time, those are both referred to as split phase. And so what will it be at fifteen, will it be the Aitken? Or do we know yet, will it be the Aitken configuration or the Barioni configuration?
So we we have the engineer that's gonna do the the engineering drawings and the new timings, so that's when we'll decide, we'll determine that, yeah. Wha- whatever the most efficient way is, the traffic engineer will give it to us.
So is, at that point, does that come back to us again, or will that be, you guys will move forward? Once you guys make that decision.
If if it's approved tonight, it'll go to the city council, I believe, and not and not back to the traffic commission again.
One other quick question, do you think it'll have any impact on traffic on Aitken Road, because it's gonna be backed up more, people trying to turn right? By having that extra light time? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm sorry, Highway eighty six. Onto that street, you know what I mean, by having the extra wait time or anything like that?
So my understanding is, and of course, I'm fairly new to the city, but um, there's a lot more left turns than straights and because. Um, Fifteenth Street is what they call a secondary arterial, Aitken Road, as you mentioned, or Barioni is a major arterials. So, because, I think because Fifteenth Street doesn't go all the way through to La Brujerie yet, it's considered a secondary art- arterial. And so there's, as the left, there's more left turns than straights right now, so that's one of the reasons why they wanted to change it to the split phase.
I was thinking more, I probably didn't explain, like if you're coming on eighty six and you're gonna turn right to take your kid to school. Is it gonna be more of a backup on Highway eighty six because of the extra time for the light to turn, like there's not gonna be. Very, as many cars will be able to get off of eighty six?
Eh, are you going southbound on eighty six and turning right? So, if you're going southbound on eighty six and there's a split phase, so the split phase would be left turn arrow. You can still turn right when the those cars are turning left, so that, I don't see why that would.
Cause of the extra light time, if you did, like what Dennis was saying, I guess if they both turn left and. Go forward at the same time, that would help keep the flow going rather than having a third wait time.
I think you would increase the efficiency, honestly, for southbound traffic, because now you can turn right when there's left turns.
The only thing you're gonna have is more wait time going eastbound from from Fifteenth.
Yeah.
Because that section of road is not very long for backup, and especially having the school there, so that's where you may have.
And and we can adjust the timing, if we see something that is not working, like there's more timing, we need to go straight and more time to go left or whatever, we can adjust that.
And I think that south, they're making that right, southbound, uh, there's, there's a specific, the side, the uh specific uh. Lane for making that right, I believe there there's, right?
I'm sorry.
There's the two lanes, southbound on, southbound and on, uh, on eighty six, when you get to uh to Fifteenth. And there's a third lane, the turning lane, right, that that was installed with the.
The school.
Yeah, thanks, alright. Um, anybody else? Is um, uh, looking for uh. A recommendation on split phase, uh, Highway eighty six and Fifteenth Street, uh.
A motion to approve the modify the traffic signal at Highway eighty six and Fifteenth Street to split phase. And then also re- the removal of the unmarked pedestrian crosswalk.
I'll second the motion.
That's a perfect catch, thank you.
Motion carries four zero.
G reports, uh, commissioners, uh, reports, um.
Nothing to report, just thank you guys, um, there is some paving on G Street. I don't know how recent that is, but I know I've been using it more recently and I'm really excited about it, cause my tires don't feel as much. But other than that, it just, just thank you, I appreciate this, I I actually really appreciated the split phase. Concept as well, cause I utilize that turn signal a lot, so.
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Imperial Sipping Society on September thirteenth. Um, if you need tickets, I know where you can get them, I'm sure the city has some too. Um, so that should be a fun event, and I just wanted to welcome Mister Kurial again.
Thank you.
As well, and that's it.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Is um, on my, on my end, I want to apologize, uh, for uh being late uh this evening, I'm, I just barely made it, I apologize, I just was not feeling it. Good at all, um. It was a, it was a train wreck, I appreciate you guys' patience this evening, I'm still not feeling good.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have anything, I I ju- I just want to uh to. Get this uh over with, uh, staff reports. Staff reports, I am hurting so bad.
Go after that, anything, guys?
Mister Dale, um, welcome.
Thank you.
I think this is the first meeting that I, we've, we had you on board, welcome aboard.
Uh, real quick, just one that, welcome Commissioner Kurial.
Thank you.
To the team, uh, we are at your service, whatever you need, just please reach out. Uh, in addition to that, the hotel, it's almost.
The one is?
Hotel.
Oh, yeah, almost.
Almost there.
There's a lot of progress there.
Oh, it's really good.
It's really nice, yeah.
It's exciting.
Sorry, yeah, I just have a brief twenty minute. The hotel is is almost open, we took a tour, very nice rooms, very nice amenities, really looking forward to it. Get well, feel better. And welcome to Mister Kurial.
Thank you.
Appreciate the perspective you're gonna bring.
Um, with no further ado, it's um, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this uh meeting of the planning commission for Sep. For uh August twenty eighth at uh seven nineteen, uh, we will uh. Convene again for a regularly scheduled meeting on September eleventh, uh, twenty twenty four at six thirty, thank you.